Go ahead and call those four, please stand for Project Legions.
Project Legions to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All set? All right, I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance as the minutes can reflect the attendance of the various trustees and staff. Let's move on to item three, underwritten motion for the approval of the five-four village board minutes in the file of the three-eleven police and fire commission meeting minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second over here. Comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes? Clear and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Anybody on in the audience or online that wishes to be heard on a non-agenda item? All right, let's move forward. Business presented by the president, small business relief loan program as an opportunity for us to use some of our revolving loan funds that is basically dedicated for business improvement. But we have a potential opportunity here to help out some struggling businesses due to the current coronavirus epidemic, so pandemic. So Jess, do you want to kind of give us an overview?
Certainly, with the change in microphones here, just getting into the details of the IFC. So, working with Ozaki Economic Development to look to utilize the de-federalized revolving loan program funds would be de-federalized or taken out of federal government jurisdiction, we are able at a local level to fund economic development-related projects. With that, we have a $450,000 amount of funds retained within that revolving loan fund program. What we are proposing to do is utilize $125,000 of that for seed money to establish a small business relief loan program. As President Brunkwald pointed out, this would look to help qualifying local businesses with short-term, five-year term loans up to $10,000 per loan on a first-come, first-served basis, and we would look to move forward with that program upon approval. Again, this is looking to help people get back on their feet following the initial public health orders that have been out there. We are looking to have some, a significant amount of oversight on this with particular guidelines that are set forth for the program. We would leverage Ozaki Economic Development as the management entity with staff-level review of applications as well. This program would look to remain in effect until either all of the allocated funds are executed through loans, or there's termination of the program by the village board action. There is a word of caution that goes with the establishment of such a program. The revolving loan fund, following the conclusion of all active tax incremental financing districts, the revolving loan fund would remain the only economic development tool available to the village. With that, some consideration of utilizing some of those funds to seed a small business relief program should be considered a word of caution. That said, staff is coming forward with a motion to approve the establishment of this relief loan program, small business relief loan program. We do have Community Development Director Wolf with us, as well as Kathleen Schelling from Ozaki Economic Development, should there be any questions. And with that, I will mute myself and turn it over to the village president to preside.
All right, thank you. The only request that I had on is that I forwarded over to Jesse was that I would like to have the review by eventually the approval by the village board. In the past, when we had revolving loans, we've had two that I can recall. That all eventually came through the village board for approval. You know, I think we meet every two weeks. I, you know, if a person or an organization or a company or business, whatever is going to apply for this, certainly that two-week is not going to be a hindrance as far as a timing perspective. But as Jesse looks to, Jessica and Kathleen are on online, so any questions regarding this particular program or project?
Mr. President, I have a question. Does the village keep track, or do we have an idea of how many businesses would qualify for a program like this? So, for example, how many are under 25 employees, 25 or under?
That might be a question for the chamber. That might be, do you want to go to that end? Yes?
Have we had any contact with any business that has called and asked if there's anything like this available so far?
I would turn that over to Director Wolf.
My question was if we've had any businesses contact us directly, asking if there were some type of loan relief available to them?
No businesses contacted me directly, but I received from the chamber that businesses had contacted Pam King, asking if there's any additional support that the village can provide. Pam indicated that those businesses were salons, food establishments, and that type of small businesses.
Okay.
Other questions for Jessica or Kathleen? All right, I guess, you know, we talked about it at staff level, where the money is in the revolving loan fund. In effect, this is almost, you know, maybe it's not 100% consistent with what the original intent for, but I mean, it certainly is a good use of it. Any other further questions? Underwritten motion to approve the establishment and implementation of the village of drafting small business relief loan program in accordance with the guidelines presented with the change that final approval and review would be conducted at the village board level. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second. Final comments and questions? Clear and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's move on to the pool.
All right, before the village board this evening is consideration of the 2020 operations for the Grafton Family Aquatic Center. This discussion actually started at the park recreation director level throughout the area, being Port Washington, Cedarburg, Mequon, ourselves, and several others. That said, a lot of considerations have gone into being to responsibly operate a municipal pool with all things considered, with the coronavirus, COVID-19 pandemic, and the concerns related to it. To summarize, some of the big, most significant considerations that we wanted to bring forward for the village board to consider this evening are the notion that it is fully anticipated there would be lost revenue and increased costs. Lost revenue through individuals maybe not necessarily being comfortable with going to the pool, with the potential for a shortened season, with the potential of closing down a concession stand due to sanitization, due to sanitizing concerns. But then increased costs as well. There would be the supplies, the sanitizing supplies. In speaking with Director Sastre, we'd be looking at, more likely looking at additional staff. Lifeguards cannot be tasked with any of the sanitizing work or any of the enforcement of the social distancing work. They're there to lifeguard and protect the swimmers within the pool. So, we'd be looking at extra staff with those duties as well. Quite frankly, from my side as administrator, I would struggle with assigning such important tasks as that to either high school or college-age individuals, which is the primary source of our seasonal employee pool. And again, obviously, the public health recommendations that continue to change, but social distancing has remained very constant, and points of contact have remained very constant through all of the public health recommendations. With regards to specific financial impact to the village attached to the IFC this evening, was it a breakdown of the 2019 season report? It does show how the aquatic center was subsidized in the amount of about $68,000. Considering the information that we know today about social distancing, potential reduction in allowing the number of people into the pool, potential shortening of the season, requirement, and other requirements for keeping the public safe, putting our heads together at a staff level and looking through the needs to responsibly operate the pool, we would be looking at an anticipated subsidy in excess of $100,000 this year. That said, it took us a significant amount of review before coming forward with a recommendation that we have here this evening, but I did want to circle back and speak to the notion that all of the area directors have been talking about this, and this same recommendation is coming forward to the Cedarburg Council tomorrow evening, the Port Washington Council, either beginning tomorrow, possibly June 2nd. And Mequon, I have not received feedback as to their scheduling of when they will consider their pool operations. But our two immediate neighbors did come back with this recommendation of looking to close the pool for the 2020 season and, you know, issue the necessary refunds is being brought forward for consideration. I do want to point out, checking my notes here, we are recommending that the pool still be filled, so that way we can continue to exercise the equipment and avoid potential future mechanical issues. A prolonged shutdown of those mechanicals, we may run into freeze-ups or other just weakening because it is not being exercised appropriately. We would treat the water minorly to make sure it would not turn green with algae, but also to filling the pool would protect paint coating that is on the pool shelf versus letting it bake in the summer sun. But again, I want to reiterate the action requested this evening due to the public health concerns, the negative fiscal impact that is clearly anticipated, we are recommending that the village board move to close the family aquatic center for the 2020 season and direct staff to issue any necessary refunds.
All right, thank you. John, I see you on online. Anything you wish to add to that comment? Might have you. It's John, I'm you.
Hold on, Mr. President, I will unmute you.
There you go. All right, John can hear us?
Yes, I can.
You want to add any comments to Jesse's statements?
Actually, that's everything. And I put in a report in the notes, so I have specific facts and figures, but we're really looking at a 37% decrease in attendance. There's two ways to look at it, keep people safe, and we're less than try that, that's for no cost, and so that's, that's everything.
Okay. I'll open it up to the village board for comments, questions? Go ahead.
So, again, with things changing all the time, if there's new or different recommendations that come forward, will this be evaluated at all, Jesse? Will we look at what our other communities are doing in the next few months? You know, or is it that that's it? We're done, forget it, close it for the season?
We are looking to, a recommendation to close for the season. Yes, there are circumstances that continue to change regularly and fairly quickly, but that said, making the decision for the entire season, because if we were to reevaluate it and look to start out, say, you know, mid or late July, we would have to go and find all of those lifeguards and hire them and bring them on board. We would have to make sure all the concessions are staged, if we open the concession stand, and other staging actions are appropriately taken. So that is why the logistics of that, I think, overcome the idea of reevaluating it partway through the summer versus making the decision for the season.
So if we do close the pool right off the bat, does the amount of money that we lose versus opening it, I mean, I'm assuming that's going to be less than? I mean, obviously, we're not opening, we're not making any money, we're not paying out any, any salaries either?
Correct.
Do you have any idea what that might look like that way? With the pool closed?
With the pool closed, we would be looking at savings of that approximately $100,000, $40,000 to $100,000, depending on, depending on opening times, depending if it's closed because of weather. Individuals aren't paid those days, if there would be a lot of closures. So there's a range there, but that said, I think Director Sastre might be able to weigh in on that a little bit better. John, if I, John, if I could ask if you could weigh in on the staff costs and opening midway versus closing for the season, just to help provide context? John, if you could please help provide a little bit of context regarding if we were to hire staff midway through summer or just not bringing the staff on board, what kind of savings we might be looking at? We have the overall forecast of the $100,000, and I know that does include staff time, but also some of the operational costs. If you could help break that down for us?
So, John, understanding exactly what you're asking.
So, John, I'm sorry, I guess my question was, with not opening the pool at all, obviously we're getting no revenue, would it make our losses significantly less? Can you, do you have any idea of how much we would lose with the pool closed versus opening and losing more money, being open?
Well, let me comment on that.
Does that make sense?
Let me comment on that real quick. So right away, the pool doesn't make money.
Right. It never makes money.
Right. So it's either we're subsidizing it, you know, to have it open, or we don't subsidize it, and that's money that we
That we make.
That we don't pay out. But I think the bigger question, and I know the money is a consideration, but you know, we, you know, this is, this is being requested by every pool in the area. It's not, it's not a question, it's not all about finances, right? I mean, we're, we've made a public statement about, you know, what we're doing with our parks, what we're doing with our facilities, we're keeping those closed for now. I think that anytime, you know, we promote an opportunity for public gathering, I think we're doing a little bit of a disservice, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I did take a look at the CDC guidelines this morning, and they really say nothing about whether they support, you know, that COVID can be transmitted via water, especially given the treatment of bromine and chlorine. But the thing here is it all comes down to social distancing. That's the big concern, social distancing, how you keep all of the, all of the surfaces clean in between people, you know, even down to how we keep the lifeguard stands clean, not opening up the slides, you know, I think it's a good, I think it's a good plan to shut it down. It would appear that all we're really going to be paying for is the utilities to keep the pump running and, and the supplies to keep it mildly chemically treated, if I understand that correct, John?
That's correct. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question. So even if we were to vote to keep the pool open, didn't I read and understand that the lifeguards were not trained? How, how would they get training if we were to consider even opening it?
Well, I think those are all good questions. I think every community that's, you know, dealing with this is going to have the same issue. The training is one thing, getting the volunteers, that are getting, even getting people to be lifeguards, parents that may not be overly comfortable with their kids being lifeguards. I think that those all are, you know, considerations that everybody needs to consider. I mean, even when you look at the pool, the way it's configured, you know, going through the locker rooms, those are, those are all choke points, those are single doors, so people are going to be coming and going. There's clearly they're going to be passing within feet of each other, so I mean, those are all things that are just the way the pool is set up right now. Other thoughts?
Yes, sir. Before I cast my vote, I would like to apologize to the youth in our community for having to make this tough decision.
Fair enough. The action requested is a motion to close the family aquatic center for the 2020 season and to direct staff to issue any necessary refunds.
I'll offer.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we'll take it in the form of resolution. Okay. Final questions, comments? Clear and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution passes. Let's go on to item C, reopening the village offices. We'll talk a little bit about that also.
Yes, before the village board this evening, as you know, the Supreme Court struck down any notion of the stay-at-home emergency order. Under that emergency order, we have implemented a minimum staffing model and closed village offices to the public. With that change, we are beginning preparations on reopening our offices. We are constructing plexiglass shields for the point-of-sale at all the departmental corners. We are procuring, this has been ongoing, but we do continue to procure sanitizer products. We have factory masks available for staff members that work at the front counter at the point-of-sale. We are also going to be reviewing social distancing procedures to assist with those point-of-sale safety aspects. With that, I am asking the village board for authorization to reopen our village offices beginning June 1st. The reasoning behind the June 1st date is we would look to avoid the potential for extensive customer contact with the March 31st property tax installment date, due date, pardon, excuse me, May 31st property tax installment due date. We think this three-business-day delay in reopening would be prudent to avoid that influx of heavy customer traffic. There is a level of comfort in bringing forward this request because we did collect first-quarter utility bill payments, as well as the March 31st property tax installments, that would be the second installment there of property taxes, and we were very successful in utilizing the village hall drop box payments by mail and also electronic payment over our village's website. I did speak with some front office staff to provide anecdotal feedback that is not here in the IFC. They felt through the phone calls they received that the utility bill collections and property tax installment collections did go very well. So again, that added to my level of comfort with requesting the establishment of June 1st as the opening date for village offices. One question that I believe would be expected to be asked, what are our neighbors doing? Port Washington is scheduled to open their offices on June 2nd. Mequon is scheduled to open their offices on June 1st. The city of Cedarburg actually opened their offices today. The library here in Grafton would look to mirror whatever decision is made with regards to opening village offices, they would set the opening date the same. It is important to point out, though, that the June 1st opening of village offices does not look to include the senior center. And that is for reasons, their primary focus is helping a population that should not be about considering the public health concerns. So, the June 1st again would apply to village offices, and the library would look to mirror that opening date, but it would not apply to the senior center. And that is what I have for the board this evening.
And we never took action, actually closed it, so are you looking for just an authorization?
Yes, just an authorization that the village board is comfortable with that June 1 opening date.
Underwritten that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion and?
I'll second.
Comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So, I guess I'm trying to understand, you listed really the main reasons as we haven't had time to prepare. I believe that you were getting our departments to make some plexiglass pieces?
Yes.
So we've known all along since, I think, the end of March, when the governor had said that he was going to put the stay-at-home order in place with the end date of May 26th?
Correct.
So we knew the May 26th date was there to start with. Was there any thought to doing any of these things in this last two-month period to get ready for May 26th?
Yes, we were prepping all along. The plexiglass shield wasn't late in addition to our prep work, but as far as the social distancing, the sanitizers, the masks, that was all in place. But with that, we would ask for a little bit extra time to make sure we are able to get those plexiglass screens in place, and also to, again, avoid what we believe will be a rush of customer traffic, or a significant amount of customer traffic with opening the doors because of that last installment of payments. Again, just looking to lessen the exposure, not only for our staff, but also for residents coming in. That is the primary focus here, but yes, staff has definitely been taking efforts all along in prepping, and what we're asking for is a three-business-day delay.
Yeah, so I, I just have a concern with that. I mean, I, I almost feel like this is rushed now. You know, last week when the Supreme Court came back and they said that as of the next day, they were going to recommend that the stay-at-home, you know, be dropped, and that restaurants could open, bars could open with certain types of common sense restrictions. That could have been a date that we would have opened, because I feel as if two months has gone by and we're kind of not ready. And so we're going to ask for another three days. There, I mean, the offices have been closed for more than two months, and I'm sure that's frustrating to some of the citizens, it can be frustrating to some of us. I guess I'm concerned that here we are rushing at the last minute, asking for an extension when we knew that the 25th, the 26th was coming. So that's a concern of mine. I, I feel like we already should be open, or we should be opening up this week, or next week on the 26th, when that was the original date.
Jesse, concerns regarding the plexiglass, the plexiglass, well, how did the stores do with it? I mean, they had it the week after the stay-at-home came here, or two months later, it was still laying in?
That is correct. It was admittedly a last-minute decision or course of action that we took in anticipation of that opening date. So yes, we are behind the curve on that plexiglass that is on us. That decision was made late in the game, but it is something we're looking to do.
Well, Jesse, and it doesn't take two months to get people sanitizers and masks and the elementary things pretty quick, right?
Yes, sir, we have that in place. We, what we don't have in place are the plexiglass dividers. We have the masks available, we have the sanitizer available, we have the spray cleaner for the point-of-sales well. It's strictly looking to limit that exposure. We do have the plexiglass aspect, yes, but looking to limit the exposure not only for staff, but also residents coming in through that last portion of this month, and establishing a date certain, so everybody would know exactly when we're opening up.
All right. So how many areas are getting plexiglass, besides the here?
It would be Park and Rec Corner, DPW Corner, Communities Development Corner, and then Village Hall.
About the library?
The library would be as well, yes.
Can you say, can you be inspection?
Yes, early inspections, community development.
Okay, okay. All right, other comments? Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Show your name.
Who? I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item six, resolution or action items. The patio leases are basically, I'm assuming, kind of repeats from last year, or are they reading them, or, right? Do I add something to that?
Should I speak with this guy, lock in the mic, or? Yeah, I don't know if this helps. These are, these are the licenses for the right-of-way use that you see at the restaurants downtown. In the past, we have granted leases to use the right-of-way space. Now we're changing it, and this has been a long time in the works, we're changing it to a license to use the right-of-way space. The main difference is, if we should ever decide to terminate that use, we would simply revoke the license, we wouldn't have to go through some sort of eviction process on what you might see for a true lease. Mostly for the new, here with me for the new trustees, what you're doing is you're granting a right to use the space. There are terms in here, it can't be used for unlawful reasons, it can't be waste, there can't be nuisances created in the space. All these, we've never had any issues, I can, you know, with any of our downtown users, Atlas or mobile. All these, we've never had any issues. I can, you know, with any of our downtown users, Atlas or, or Mobile, obviously they've been wonderful licensees. But this is all stuff that the lawyers throw in, you know, to protect the village. Couple of changes from the, from the documents you've seen in prior years. Number one, we've made it on, on page two, in article two, we made it automatically renewable. And we're, we're simply trying to accommodate the licensees. They come back every year. And so it's made automatically renewable, subject to either party's right to terminate 60 days and at least 60 days in advance of the next year. So we want to give the users warning if we felt we had to use that right of space. Um, so I wanted the trustees to be aware of that. The other two changes are at the end. Uh, from a staff level, there was a, a feeling that they should, these licenses shouldn't be assignable to any, to any other, if, if this restaurant sold and another restaurant moved in, they would have to come back to us and get a new license. If we, we'd want to vet that, that restaurant at that time. And then you'll see, uh, sort of what I'm calling the pandemic provision. Uh, page seven, letter E, governmental order compliance. If nothing in this lease or license, excuse me, grants the user the right to avoid any terms of a, of a stay at home order or anything like that. We don't want to give the wrong impression there. You know, they, they get the right to use the space, but they have to honor honor any, any orders in place. I think we're all hoping there won't be any more orders in place, but that's remains to be considered.
Any questions for Mike?
Is there any word is, uh, Atlas going to be opening soon so we can actually use this? Any, any here to them?
I defer to Jesse or Jessica.
So with regards to Atlas Barbecue, um, I understand their, um, closing is temporary. Um, they are, um, will be ramping up. I do not have a date certain on that though. Um, Jessica, I don't know if you've been in contact with Atlas Barbecue?
So let's, let's take that on their department and officers' reports.
But, um, they do intend on reopening.
Okay, um, Kate, do you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna say I was in contact with them and they don't know. They don't know. They're gonna, they're gonna try to make it work.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the right of way license agreements for both Atlas Barbecue and Mobile's place.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's move on to item seven, Department and Officers' report. Um, Amber. You live at Green Bay. All right, so we had a major green event. You want to kind of give us, uh, the lowdown on everything that happened at, uh, during water, wastewater, DPW?
Sure, I will. Kind of just remember what happened. Um, obviously got a lot of rain over the last 24 hours.
In human capacity.
It has been flooding again along South Green Bay Road, Falls Road, South Green Bay Road, where we had flooding in the past. Um, that did cause, um, what I heard, some sanitary dampeners and basements may not have been spent with that, um, or how the properties were affected. Um, we're going to, are still, um, actually pumping water from the pond and corner of Falls and every road there, um, into a culvert under the road and directly to the river, so that does not flow further to the north and cause additional flooding. So to continue to pump right now, um, the level of that pond is not much down at all, but we have been able to keep up with the infloding of that pond, keeping it flowing out, so that we don't have, um, additional flooding. We've also had, you know, a number of residences call with flooded basements to, to store water. Um, I don't know if I can try and help repair that, um, a lot of those situations, um, don't necessarily happen in our response system. Did open the dam. Um, dam was partially open going into the end and began to open it slowly at about 8 o'clock, um, Sunday morning. Slowly opening it throughout the day. I would say by early or mid afternoon, it was barely wide open and it is close to, um, it's maximum opening rate now. There are a number of logs that are stuck on it and anyone that has to buy it. Um, yesterday, week, day or today, there are a number of large logs stuck by pass gate. Um, so at this point, you do not want to operate it either open or close any further until we finally can get rid of those logs. Um, so we don't want it to be the, um, pylons or the average of that. Those were the major items unless anyone has any other questions.
Yep, Tom?
Uh, excuse me, I may not have heard you initially, Amber, but were we able to avoid sewage backups into the homes on Green Bay?
I don't believe that we completely avoided it. I only talked to two homeowners, homeowners out there yesterday. I'm not sure if utility staff has watched others. Um, but I did talk to two, um, South Green Bay Road residents that did have sanitary sewer backups. The explanation I was given, they were fairly small, not, not anything like we've seen in the past, or they kind of into a, a small, empty area around their brains.
Uh, one more question, Amber. Um, we had put a lot of money into either replacing or renovating the pumps in that Green Bay Road lift station because apparently they were, uh, not working so well or efficiently a couple of years ago, the last time we had a backup on Green Bay. Did they perform well this time? Did you hear anything from utility as to how that lift station operated during this event?
Sure, yeah, those two pumps, there's two pumps in that South Green Bay Road lift station were, were working well. They were both working at both pass me. Um, and at the highest range, kind of late evening into the, night last night, um, both of them working at both pass me. Just added up to be pumped, um, with the hose. We did have additional pump that brought in, um, by gas pump, um, some of that station. But as far as I know, the pumps in the station were working well. We were just over passing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Amber?
Yeah.
Uh, Amber, um, we knew this storm was coming. Should that dam have been opened sooner than Sunday morning?
Um, I guess there's a lot of different ways you can look at it. Like I said, it was partially open. It wasn't open extremely far, but it was definitely open. I'd say somewhere between 2 and 3 feet going into the weekend. Um, until the water levels rise, you can't start draining down too much water too quickly or we get a lot of undermining right on that east side of the river where it is open. So we do have to wait for clothes to start rising a little bit to, to safely open it. And that's why we started kind of first thing, um, yesterday morning to get ahead of, you know, the nasty rain. And we still have not hit peak, um, flows in the river. So those peak flows are still coming here going next few days and, and all that rainwater, um, downstream.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, just, Amber, I want to thank your team, uh, and I also want to thank you and Jesse for communicating with us on the, uh, on going with this, uh, yesterday. And, uh, thanks for keeping us updated and kudos to your team.
Okay. All right, Jesse, any updates you want to pass along?
Um, all updates, um, that I've been able to pass along have gone out by email. Um, I do hold the board a weekly update, um, that I will look back and do a snapshot of the last week's updates. Um, that will be forthcoming.
Any questions for staff or any?
Um, I have a question. Have we heard anything more about the, um, process for the new fire, new police chief?
Yes, um, the new police chief, they did, uh, the first round of interviews via Zoom. Um, the police and fire commission are working with a consultant now to figure out how to best accommodate the second round of interviews. So they are looking to, I spoke with Chairman Maroder yesterday, uh, or excuse me, earlier this morning. Um, and he wants to keep this process moving as quickly as he can. Um, he understands there's been a delay and there's a good reason for that delay. That said, he strongly believes, believes we can move forward at this point responsibly and, uh, get through the process.
How many are there? Candidates, three?
Uh, I do not know what the police fire commission is going to finalize. Um, generally speaking, recruitment, they will file down to three or four finalists. Um, but, uh, that will be announced by the police fire commission.
Okay.
I have something else for Jesse. Jesse, if you could have someone look at our village website?
Sure.
We have two new trustees that have been on board a month. Their name is nowhere to be found. We have trustee Maniki and trustee List. Still listed? If you could update that, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's easy enough to do.
President Brunkel, usually this time of the year, our committees meet to get a CIP with the determination of what the different, um, departments need. Are we getting anything like that in the next coming months?
Yeah, do you want to go over, uh, the, the process this year?
Yes, absolutely. Um, what we're looking at this year is, um, kind of a unique way to handle condition, uh, excuse me, capital improvement plan. Um, we're actually looking to go about capital improvement planning this year, very similar to what we do with our operational budget each year, where the village board would convene as a committee of the whole. And we will have the departments make the presentations, um, to the committee of the whole. Um, all of that, uh, capital improvement plan information will be provided, um, to the board meeting as a committee of the whole. Um, and then we will have that discussion and break it down as to what we would like to set in place as a plan um, to consider when we would put the, uh, capital budget together this coming fall. Um, so yes, the, um, all of that information is forthcoming. Um, Paul and I are looking to get that out and distributed, uh, by the middle of this week.
Okay. Other questions? All right, let's move on to the licenses. Item one is the expansion of premise for the lawyer license for the alehouse.
Director, oh, sure. Okay, um, just to quickly walk through the, uh, um, request here before the board. Um, we did receive a request from the owner of the LLC doing business as the Milwaukee Alehouse. Um, in anticipation of lines waiting to get in the restaurant and when they reopen for full service, um, they will most likely be limited to a 50% capacity. This is what they are anticipating. And therefore, in essence, want to create a queuing area in which, um, customers would be able to have their beverages, um, outside of the normally approved areas, um, set forth in their liquor license. Um, with that, an event premise location, um, is, expansion is requested, um, specifically for the dates of May 26th through June 30th, um, for the hours of 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. daily. This temporary expansion, um, is, uh, brought to us by the clerk's office with a, um, site plan attached to IFC where any area, um, along 13th Avenue, um, near the entrance of the alehouse and then wrapping around towards their patio seating, um, in the back along the riverwalk, where individuals, uh, customers would be able to, um, have, uh, drinks while they wait. This would be policed, if you will, by management staff. Um, and it would be in their best interest to police that very closely because it would directly impact their liquor license, um, itself. Um, with, uh, further details, I would have to defer to the clerk's office, but that is the, um, essence of the proposal before the board this evening.
Yeah, several emails were back and forth. Uh, those copies were made and handed to, um. My concern on this is, is definitely a slippery slope.
Is what? I'm sorry, is the slippery slope?
I mean, this is one restaurant, but I mean, this could easily apply to Lobos. It could easily apply to anybody that has a liquor license. It could apply to a bar. It could, we could have, you know, I'm, you know, not saying it would, but you know, we have the bridge and you've got, you know, a number of bars on Wisconsin and things like that that all have liquor licenses. I mean, I appreciate the seriousness of the request. I just don't know how you can enforce it. That, that's my question. And, and, um, certainly we can't be expecting our police department to be expecting the private staff of the, of the owners or the owners of the facilities to be as thorough as a police, as an officer. Again, to me, again, it's, it's the slippery slope. It'd be, there's this, this, this could theoretically apply to just about anybody that would see this and say, hey, I would like to do the same thing. So that's just my concern.
President Brunkel, I would agree with you. Um, my biggest concern in all of this is looking, those steps to the north side are odd steps. And, um, they, they aren't like, they're drawn out like, you know, 10 or 15 steps. They're actually platforms on platforms and platform. And I, I have a concern with people, you know, enjoying, um, adult beverages and, uh, being on that step and, uh, you know, falling and, uh, you know, the potential liability for us as well. Um, I, I, I agree with you though. I think it is a slippery slope that we have a, a queuing place outside of the building, uh, for their occupancy.
So that's, that's just my thoughts, so.
So, um, it looks like there will be asking for this to occur for about a month.
A month to start.
Right, right. But initially one month, one month that we can maybe evaluate and see how it goes. And, you know, if it goes to heck in a basket in the first two weeks, maybe that's our answer. We feel like the restaurants have already taken a hit with what's been happening and their capacity is going to be down to 25 or 50%. So for temporary, on a temporary basis, I agree. I think it would be, be nice to try for the business.
Other thoughts? All right, uh, there's a motion to approve the expansion of premise for the liquor license establishment.
I didn't get that for you. We, we need a motion.
That's what I said. The action is a, a motion to approve.
Yes, correct.
What did I miss?
Um, we, we don't have a motion.
That's what I said. I, I, the action is a motion to approve the expansion of per, of premise for the liquor license establishment. That's okay. Doing business as the Milwaukee Alehouse, 1208 13th Avenue for the dates of May 26th, 2020 through June 30th, 2020 from 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. daily. All in favor?
Um, I.
Aye.
Show hands. All in favor?
We don't, no, we have.
No motions than me.
No motions than me.
There's, there's a recommendation.
I'm having a motion. All right, all right.
I'm making a motion.
Motion?
I'm sorry. Well, second.
Motion and second over here. Okay, all in favor? Show hands. All against? Motion passes, four to three. All right, let's move on to item B. There's no, uh, operators licenses. Let's go on to item nine. For the bills, um, entertain a motion for the approval of village expenditures, $327,000, $143,000, $143.37. So moving.
A second.
Motion is second. Uh, questions that were submitted have been answered. Any questions on the bills? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 10, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Want to push the camera?